Two meetings tonight will begin with a special meeting of the Cunningham Township Board. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustees Brown, here.
Hazen.
Here.
Hersi.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Woo.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
We have a quorum. Next up is public participation. I don't have any cards from anyone who wishes to address the town board. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the town board? Okay, seeing none. We have three items of new business. The first is Resolution Number T 2019-11-018R, which is a resolution determining the amounts of money necessary to be raised by the tax levy for the tax year 2019, collectible in 2020. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Jared.
Second.
Seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustees Brown.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Hersi.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes. Second item is rescheduling of the regular December 2nd meeting 2019 to December 9th, 2019. Is there any comments on this?
No, this just lets us be in sync better with the city's publication of its ad in the newspaper. We're going to run a third explanatory ad, talking about the levy and why it's so big and, you know, related to the Carl stuff. So we've done that in the past. And for next year, there's a fifth Monday in November. My intention is to try to sync us up better from the beginning of this process. So, but it's the fifth Monday in November, so it'll make it a little bit trickier.
So the purpose to move this meeting this one time is to...
Just get us in sync so that we can do everything sort of side by side.
With the tax levy. Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to, for the rescheduling to be approved.
A second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Bill. Any discussion? Is this a voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. Last item is a discussion item. Just a heads up, we'll be discussing the meeting schedule on December 9th for the 2020 calendar year, so be thinking about your input on that.
Yeah, so there are a couple of possibilities, and I'll be sending out some email related to this. Just want to keep that in mind. We'll, we'll get a, we'll get a schedule to you that includes, you know, legal holidays and so on, the Mondays where you'd be meeting on Tuesday and that sort of thing. But if you have any thoughts on, on it, we'll have it on the December 9th meeting for approval.
All right. Thank you very much. With no further business before the town board, this meeting is adjourned. And this will be followed by the regular city council, Urbana Okay. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council. We do have a revised agenda that reflects a presentation by the Regional Planning Commission. Well, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Hersi.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts. Woo. Mayor Marlin.
Here. We have a quorum. Next up is approval of minutes from the November 4th, 2019 minute, uh, meeting. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
I hear Bill Brown moving to approve and Sharice seconding that.
I'll second it, yeah.
Any corrections?
And we even got Dennis Roberts in the minutes this time, and he's not here. So next time, we'll probably put him in by mistake.
Well, Dennis would appreciate that he's in. Um, is there, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Any additions to the agenda? Okay. I would add something very special. Today is Councilmember Eric Jacobson's birthday, so we'd like to wish him a happy birthday.
Aw, shucks.
He'll be, he'll be celebrating afterwards. Okay. Next up is the presentations and public input portion of our agenda. I'm going to go with public input first, and then we'll go on to the presentation from the Regional Planning Commission. I have a card from Brother Bobby Gilner. He wishes to express support of his church, but he does not wish to address members of the city council. Can, can we ask what church this is?
Uh, New Freewill Baptist Church is across the street from Hooker T. Washington.
So the New Freewill Baptist Church, okay.
Reverend Andrew Williams Church.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Thank you very much. We also have a card from Debbie Insana related to the climate crisis and building permits. Would you like to speak?
I would.
Please come forward. And you have five minutes.
I have some printed copies of this.
Okay.
Hopefully. So, my name is Debbie Insana. I'm a home designer and subdivision developer. I developed Brick Houses Road subdivision in northeast Urbana.
Ms. Insana, could you speak into the microphone so this can be recorded and heard by the viewers at home?
Start over, huh? Okay. So, my name is Debbie Insana, and I'm a home designer and developer of Brick Houses Road, which is a subdivision in rural Urbana. And I'd like to talk to you about the climate crisis and an idea that I would like to share with you about how Urbana can start curbing some carbon emissions that originate in Urbana through building permits that are issued here. Forty percent of greenhouse gas emissions are caused by buildings on this planet, and since you approve all of the buildings that will be built in this area, I'm particularly concerned about large homes that are, that are built here. And so I have this poster, which I think most of you have there, so I'll share this with people behind me. This, this map here shows that the number of heating and cooling degree days that are in our area is significantly higher than average for the country. The, these graphs down below, the, the average home energy costs, the, the top one there, is from the Energy Information Administration, and it says that the average home uses about half of its energy in heating and cooling costs. But we are not in an average part of the country, and the average home in the United States, new homes are being built at 2,400 square feet. So if you, if you look at how much more heating and cooling degree days we have, the average home energy costs are more like 60% for the average home. But if you're building a home that's more like 5,000 square feet, which Urbana doesn't have a lot of them, but there are some, and that's the building permits that, that's on the list that I gave you that were issued this in the last two years, the energy costs come to be about almost 80% of a person's utility bill. So if a person, and now, I built, um, I, I built my own house in, in Brick Houses Road 10 years ago, and I know some people know about it and have toured it. And over the past couple of years, we built a, a demonstration home, so we now have two net zero energy homes in, in the subdivision. And the, the results of this were just so amazing that I, that I, I just feel like it's kind of a shame that we are allowing people to build large homes without building them this way. So when you have an, a house that's, that is this large, so I have this, the, the houses that, that are generally being built today are still being heated with natural gas. And natural gas, burning natural gas creates greenhouse gases, but just the, the production of the methane, you know, that is used as natural gas causes an even greater greenhouse gas. And so the average home in central Illinois that is using just, and this is just the natural gas part, this is the, this, this middle section here, the hot air balloons are, are equal to five tons of carbon dioxide each. And the, the gray ones are the carbon dioxide that's burned, but the purple ones are, are caused by just the methane that's released during the mining of natural gas. So the average home is this one in the middle. And a larger home that's around 5,000 square feet is the one on the right. That's this, this much carbon emissions. This is done over a 40-year timescale because when we built the, the demonstration home here, we have solar panels on the roof that are, would take it to net zero energy, and the solar panels have a 40-year expected lifespan, so we went with the 40 years. So this little diagram here shows the difference in carbon emissions that will come from the demonstration home that we have, which does actually have a little bit of natural gas, or one that's built in the traditional manner. So my, my proposal to you, my question to you is that when people are building homes in Urbana, wouldn't it be a good idea to try to encourage them to, to not use natural gas in, in the heating of their homes? That geothermal heating and cooling is, is the, is the, the, what do I want to say? The, the substitute for that? And then with solar panels on the roof, which provides the power to run the geothermal, then you've got your carbon emissions down to something like this. And then I ran out of time. Well, this last one just shows you that, that I know that what we're proposing is more expensive, but that the savings to the homeowner is significant, $275,000 over the 40 years that they would spend on energy costs, which they wouldn't spend if they built like our houses. And the house that I built is, it's available for touring. I'm trying to get as many people as possible to see it. I would love for you to come and see it and feel it and understand how it works and see if we can't start making some positive steps to where we can change the way people are heating their homes in our area and start reducing some of these carbon emissions.
And you have a tour scheduled. When is that?
I have tours almost every Sunday. So the house is listed for sale on Zillow, for sale by owner, and the, the open house tours are always posted there. I will be out of town in early December, so I won't have one then, but I'd be very happy to schedule a tour to anybody who wants to see it at any time.
Well, if you'd like to share the information, we could share it with the council members.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So we, we have, we retrofitted a large old house with geothermal. And of course, we're never, that's expensive. We'll never get our money back out of that. But on the other hand, I think your numbers for new construct, and we, and we knew that, we knew that. But your numbers for new construction are really very interesting. Is there, like, a more formal document?
Shows where I, how I did this?
Well, also, just in general, somebody who's thinking about buying a new home or, or building a new home or developing a, an area, just some, you know, sort of spreadsheet style numbers for how much they will save on energy, what will be the payback time, and, and also, of course, to let them know that, I mean, there are local contractors who, who have the technological capability to do geothermal.
I, I think, I think the problem lies in that, so this is the second house I built like this. And generally, when people go to have a new house built, they don't know all of this stuff about the houses, and they talk to a contractor, and the contractor will propose building the house the way they normally do, because that's the best way. They know how to price a house and, and, you know, do it like, without losing money.
Right.
And so what, what I would like people to do is to come and see this house. And, and then throughout the house, I have posters like this. I have other information like this. And, and the thing about the house is, it's not just one thing. It's not just geothermal. It's passive solar. It is, it is an all-brick house, and all brick has not been recognized in the way that its thermal mass contributes to, you know, having lower energy costs. And, and then start to change the way, we need people to start requesting houses being built this way. On the building permits that, the list that I gave you of all of those houses, they're almost all probably being built in the conventional way based on the price for their building permit and their square footage, except the one at the bottom, which I don't know personally, but the one on Meadow Drive is, the building permit is by Tom Lowe, and he built our house, which I coached him through because he didn't know all of these things at the time. And I do know that it's getting solar panels put on it as it's being built. So it's probably the only house that's close to a net zero type of house that's being built. But, but the thing is, we're leaving it up to people to figure this out all by themselves. Whereas if we could kind of make this more of a come look and see, which I would love for everybody to come and look and see at this house, because most of the time, when I do get people in it, they don't want to leave. I mean, they're just kind of amazed. And there's so much to know about it that your brain hurts, you know, when you're in it, just trying to figure out how cool all these things work together and all that kind of stuff.
Well, again, we'd be happy to share that information, if you can send it to us.
Yes. Well, I, I will send it to you.
Okay.
I have sent it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one other public input card from Robert Lakey, who wishes to speak at the time of the discussion on the lease to Prairie Fruits Farm. So we'll wait, we'll wait for the discussion. We have one presentation first.
Yes, sir.
Yes. So the Regional Planning Commission would like to present on the long-range transportation plan.
Thank you. My name's Ashley. I'm a transportation planner with the Regional Planning Commission, and I'm here with Rita Black. She's our planning director at the Regional Planning Commission. And we would like to give a little overview of the long-range transportation plan. This is a federal requirement for the region, and we update it every five years. It has a planning horizon of 25 years, but it does get updated every five years per federal requirement. So I'm going to give you an overview of our website. Our document this year is in the form of a website to make it more publicly available and accessible to the public and also the agencies that refer to it. So here, this is the homepage here. And just to point out before I get started, we are currently in a 30-day public comment period. These blue boxes are at the top of each page, and these little comment boxes are next to each section. And if you click on them, an email will open up where people can leave comments or email comments directly to us on the section that pertains to, you know, wherever they're located in the, in the web plan. So first, a little bit about our planning area. So this is a map here. It is focused on the Champaign-Urbana urbanized area as defined by the 2010 census. The urbanized area boundary will be updated with the upcoming census. But right now, this is the heart of our planning area as well as Mohammed. But the boundary itself, for what we refer to as the metropolitan planning area, is this gray line, and it does include a lot of undeveloped, non-urban area around the urbanized areas. And that is because of the 25-year planning horizon. We want to make sure to consider any land that may be adjacent to or relevant to urbanized area over the next 25 years. So that is the planning area that the, this plan pertains to. And in the process of developing the plan, because it is a regional plan, it does not take the place of any local plans, but it is intended to incorporate local plans, but also define a regional vision for the future. So this is a list of the different agencies that served on the steering committee. Because it is such a wide-ranging plan, we try to include all agencies that we can that are relevant to transportation, that are in and out of the immediate urbanized area. So that includes county organizations like the Emergency Management Agency, PACE here in Urbana, Mass Transit District, as well as all of the local municipalities that are in the urbanized area or within the planning area. So townships, cities, villages, some representatives at the university, all agencies that are relevant to our local transportation system. So these tabs at the top give you a sense of the main components of the plan. I'm just going to step through a couple of them quickly to give you a broad overview. So for existing conditions for our long-range transportation plan, we give, we try to include a baseline of a lot of different characteristics for, of our area so that we can then use that as kind of a platform to start visioning for the future. So we cover demographics, land use, environment, health, and transportation. And I won't go through all of them. I'll just point out a couple kind of general themes. So here in demographics, we see as expected, these are bar graphs that pertain to each of the municipalities. The blue part, and this is for age distribution in our area. So just as an illustration, no one will be surprised that this turquoise color represents college-age adults, which you can see are more represented in Champaign and Urbana than the rest of the municipalities, which also means that youth and older residents are less represented in these municipalities. So this section covers a lot of different demographic information relevant to transportation. Moving to land use, we cover things like population density, historical sites that may be impacted by transportation developments. And I will just point out here that one trend that we've been seeing, this is, these charts represent residential land area by category from between 2007 and 2017. So these first two charts look at Champaign, these second two, Urbana, and these last two, Savoy. This red area represents single-family residential area. So as you can see, most of the residential land area is consumed by single-family property. But if you look from 2007 to 2017, in each of those three municipalities, multifamily housing is increasing in every single case, most significantly in Urbana. Let's skip down to environment. Just a brief note that greenhouse gas emissions by sector here are represented in this chart here in 2017, and the red area you'll see is transportation. Fully 29% of our greenhouse gas emissions in this country come from the transportation sector. And within that, the vast majority, almost 60%, come from light-duty vehicles. So the personal vehicles that we drive every day, not necessarily aircraft and rail or the big trucks, but the majority come from our light-duty vehicles. And we heard a lot of public input throughout this process about people being concerned about the future of our transportation system and how can we reverse this trend? How can we increase biking and walking to not, to not be contributing so directly to that problem? So next, we also cover some health. As a transportation agency, particularly at the regional level, we want to be aware of how our transportation system impacts population health. So that involves understanding how our walking, biking, and transit network can help people get more physical activity, as well as how emissions in the local area can contribute to respiratory illnesses. So we do collect information and have done, tried to make some local correlations to active transportation infrastructure, walking, biking, and transit infrastructure, as related to local rates of diabetes, obesity, and respiratory illnesses. This is an ongoing research project that we have. So some data is presented in this section on health. And then lastly, the transportation section covers a lot of information on each mode of transportation in the region. The only thing I'm going to look at in this section, because there's a lot of information here, is I'm going to point out this commuting mode chart for workers 16 years and older. You'll see here, Urbana is, has the highest level here in this particular chart. This chart is showing how people are getting to work. This is the only, oh, I'm sorry. Great. Let me see if that will pop back up. Okay. Whoops, sorry. Okay, back to commuting. So this chart, as soon as it comes back up, shows us how people are getting to work. This is our only consistent data source for knowing how people travel around our community on a daily basis. So orange is public transportation, red is walking, dark green is bicycling, dark blue is taxi, motorcycle, other, green is worked at home, turquoise is carpool, and the rest of it is driving alone. So you won't be surprised that most people are driving alone. But that particular option is much smaller in Urbana than it is even in Champaign or Savoy or Tulono. So we're pretty proud in this area that, in general, we have higher rates of active transportation than the, the state or the country overall. But in Urbana in particular, a lot more people are walking, biking, and taking transit to work or school. So the other part of our existing conditions data collection was that we did a significant amount of public outreach. So we did over, I think, 17 events in the summer of 2018 to get information from local residents on what they think are the strengths and weaknesses in our local transportation system. So when we did this process, we developed it as, oh, how should I say? Instead of holding traditional meetings, we tried to go to big events where people are already at to make it as convenient as possible for people to participate. On top of that, we identify locations where traditionally underrepresented populations live or work, so that we can try to target members of the community that maybe haven't been brought into the process before. Sorry, this is taking a little bit of time to load. But I am just going to scroll down so that I can show you our input map. Your local planners have all of this data as well. So we use it to identify regional priorities, but we know this is also important information for local planners to consider when they're developing their transportation budgets or other infrastructure priorities. Might have to wait for that to load a second. Well, I'll just tell you that we have an input map. There's over 800 points on the map where people have physically put a marker on the map and then told us, you know, what they like or don't like about a particular mode or accessibility problem at different locations around the community. So it's a tremendous amount of information for local planners to use to help prioritize how to, how and where to improve the transportation system. So this went into developing our goals and objectives for the future. Another part of that public input process had to do with a survey where we asked people to, and that's not going to load either, where we asked people to tell us what they think were the top priorities in the next 25 years for the transportation system. Our three main, our three main takeaways from that question about future priorities were climate change and, and the environment, transportation accessibility for all, and walking and biking for health. So as you can see, again, repeated, our people's desire to help improve the environment and also have better health by just being more active throughout the day and being able to walk and bike to their daily destinations. I will say, too, that in Urbana in particular, the public input showed trending a little bit higher than the other areas, that the environment was consistently ranked more frequently or as a higher priority in terms of future goals. I'm not sure it's going to load well, but, okay, we'll give it a minute. So when it comes to future goals, we take into consideration federal goals, state goals, and then we use our local input to develop local goals for the region. And so there are five main priorities for goals in the region: safety, multimodal connectivity, the environment, the economy, and equity. So for each of those goals, under the Goals tab, if this was loaded, you would see a table that has goals and objectives for the future, as well as data sources, and, well, what else? Tangible performance measures. So on an annual basis, we track all of the measures in the LRTP so that we can see how much progress we're actually making toward these goals of, you know, better quality environment, better equity in transportation access, all of the priorities we have listed. In addition to that, after, you know, the, this very specific performance measures, we also have a list of strategies and responsible parties that are related to the goal, so that we know, you know, if we aren't doing good on a goal, or if we are doing good, who's responsible for that, or what extra strategies could we take to make more progress in that particular area. So we have some general goals. Hopefully you all had a chance to look at this ahead of time, since I can't show it to you now. Let's try another tab and see what happens. Okay.
Doesn't like to clarify.
Oh, should I just try it on a different browser? Oh, should I just try it on a different browser? Let me try that. So one of the main functions of the long-range transportation plan and why it is a federal requirement is so that the federal government can have a sense of our future transportation investment priorities. So when we're talking about this plan, we are taking a lot of local input, but we're really focused on regionally significant, large-scale projects that may require federal funding in the future. So along those lines, part of... Okay. This is not gonna happen. Along those lines, we developed a list of priority projects for the future. So these are called our vision projects. Some of the ones from Urbana in particular, or that involve Urbana, are, you're probably aware that currently Urbana is undergoing a study to extend the Kickapoo Rail Trail. So in the long-range plan for 2045, we've included extending that trail all the way through Mohammed. We got a lot of positive feedback on that particular project. And so that is on our long-range priority list for future funding. So any project that is part of the long-range transportation plan then has a better chance of securing federal funding, because they, the first thing they'll ask on a grant application is, is this project reflected in a plan somewhere? Has it been reviewed by the public? Does it have the support of local agencies? And so this is a great plan to be able to represent those projects going forward when they're looking for funding. Okay, so let me just zoom in on this a little bit, if it will cooperate. So this is one of the posters we used during the public outreach period, and you can't really see the detail here, but this is an attempt, this is a map of some of the regionally significant projects for the future. And then over here, we have our overarching goals and objectives. And the idea here was to help people understand how each of these regionally significant projects actually connects back to our goals. So for instance, for the Kickapoo Rail Trail, which is listed right here, we see that it hits almost every one of our five main overarching goals. It will help with multimodal connectivity, it will help with equity, it will contribute to economy and tourism, and it will help improve the environment if it actually allows people to do more biking and walking as opposed to driving alone in their cars. So this is, this poster summarizes several of the vision projects here. One of the other ones in Urbana on this list, down here you see a multimodal transit hub in downtown Urbana. This one also contributes to almost all of those overarching goals. That's a project, that's a vision project, there's no current funding for it, but it is something that the community is excited about, and I know some public agencies have already been in discussion about. Another one in Urbana, some of these are general to the region, like increasing overall ADA sidewalk and curb ramp accessibility. So you can get in, there's more details about these here and in the plan. And in addition, to get people excited about the plan and to get them to understand why we do it, we developed a couple of videos, and some of these regional projects are included in our 2045 vision video to help people imagine, you know, how these projects would actually look, how they might change, you know, their daily mobility. Because thinking into the future is not, you know, a natural activity we all do. So part of our role as the Regional Planning Commission, looking to 2045, is to help people imagine these before they actually happen, so that they're not as scary, so that we can plan for them in the way that we want them to be. And so that people start thinking about, you know, how do they change their behavior now in order to have the future that they really want. So along with our regionally significant projects, I don't wanna make anyone dizzy, but I'm gonna scroll down here, we also have a list of future projects that are not regionally significant necessarily, but local projects that are local priorities and are currently unfunded. In the event that they would also be looking for federal funding in the future, we wanted to be able to represent them in the plan in some way. So there's a map here that you can zoom in and out of to look at different projects that were submitted by different agencies. And Urbana has several on this list here and down a little bit. So we also got some public, or some public input about, once we defined our goals and objectives, we got some input on how people think they would like to incorporate them into the future. So if, we got a lot of input about people wanting to walk and bike to work, et cetera, but what is preventing them from doing that now? So we got input on some of the barriers and opportunities related to some of our overarching goals so that we could then, you know, get ahead of them and try to figure out ways to incorporate and implement some of these goals and actually realize them as we have a, you know, getting a better, a better understanding of why they're not already happening. So is it weather that's preventing you from going to work? Or is it just the fact that you live too far from work? So understanding the relationships between these decisions we have to make on a daily basis about our transportation system. We have a separate map for bike and pedestrian projects because they're such smaller scale and there's so many of them that we put them in their own map so that it made it a little bit easier to read. So there's a lot of information on that tab about the future vision projects. You can learn more about the details of the public involvement under the Public Involvement tab. And then additional documentation on the statistical modeling we use to project population and employment and land use into the future as part of this plan is, will also be available under this Appendix tab. I think I covered most of the sections. I'd be happy to answer any questions or go into any additional detail about any of these aspects that you might be interested in.
Any questions? Bill?
Thank you, Ashley.
Yeah, thanks. I really liked the interactivity of it and the embedded maps especially, be able to zoom in and out. On the maps that show accidents, it would be really helpful to be able to select an accident and see the date and time that occurred, and if possible, maybe a few details about what type of accident it was as far as, I know the, the data that's, that's maintained, the records show various things, like whether it was a rear-end occlusion or a T-bone, or, you know, right hook or whatever.
Yes.
But those kind of things, I think, could be really helpful when we're looking at, at specific road improvements, to be able to look at accidents over the last five years. Do you know how many of those, how many of your survey responses were unique, were unique responses? You said there were 800 points on a map, but that doesn't necessarily mean 800 people responded.
No, it doesn't. There were some repeated responses, but we do, we do check for kind of over-repetitive responses because we can track by IP addresses, just to make sure we're not getting a flood from one particular computer or something. And we didn't have any with more than 10 locations on a map. So we don't necessarily know how unique they are, because we also don't know which came from like the public library or which came. We also have tablets that we use at our public input events, and so of course we'll get like 100 from the same, you know, device. But we're relatively secure in the fact that there's, it's not being taken advantage of, but yeah, we don't know exactly how many are unique.
And then on the commute to work, I know that's census data, and I think you make, you make reference to the fact that most bicycle trips aren't even commuting to work trips. They're like to other things.
Sure.
Go grocery shopping or to a friend's house or whatever.
Right.
I think 85% of, I think that's the number.
By some estimates, yeah.
85% of bicycle trips are not commute to work. Are there, are there any other sources to get a metric that tells you more of mode share rather than commute to work?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So one thing that we're doing in order to get more data on, particularly on walking and biking, is we're in the process of installing, we've secured them, but they're not yet installed, six permanent counters that will be in the community, that will give us 24-hour counts for biking, biking and walking. In addition to that, we've been doing some more just manual counts around the community at specific locations. Those are not, have not been assessed yet as part of, they couldn't be incorporated in the long-range transportation plan, but that's something we're in the process of doing. And then one last thing is we got a little bit of funding this last year to administer a pedestrian and bicycle survey. So it's just a paper survey that was sent out to households around the community. But we did get a decent response for that, so we do have, that survey report will be coming out soon that should give us a little bit more information, not necessarily on the number of trips, but bicycling and walking behavior in the community to give us a better sense of where people are going, what time of day, or if they're not going, why not? Like, why not using a bicycle or walking?
I know a lot of our newer intersection, or new, newer control devices at intersections have bicycle recognition, video recognition through the stoplight. And I think some of them have the capability to count bicycles, but you have to pay extra for that. Do you know if RPC has a source of funding that they could contribute towards some of these intersections?
Good question. That is actually not something I'm familiar with. I don't know, Rita, you know anything about that?
Is there any grant funding that would, because Urbana probably can't justify it on her own, but if somebody else says it would be useful?
Every year, IDOT release a call for projects to use State Planning and Research Fund. Could be a possibility that we can apply for that, to get that funding. But what we are doing at this time, we, as, for funding through that kind of funding to IDOT, and we have just collected, Ashley said manual, but what we are doing is video counts at 25 different locations in Champaign-Urbana for, for 12 hours, from 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 in the evening. And we have detailed data for each hour related to the different people using the intersection in terms of the different modes of transportation. We have counts of vehicles, pedestrians, and bicyclists at each location. The cost is not cheap. Every single location costs us about $500 for processing the 12-hour counts. And in addition to that, we have to pay for the camera and for the person installing the camera and all that.
You just get 12 hours, and if it's, you can't predict the weather, and I don't know. There's all kinds of...
All that, exactly.
Well, thanks for trying.
But we have now collected at 20 different locations. There are five more that we are collecting throughout the whole community, because we want to have that base data collected, if possible, every two years. But the problem is funding. Hopefully we'll be able to get more funding to keep collecting that data on a regular basis.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions? Sharice?
I just wanted to know, because you did surveys, you're going from your surveys online? I think I filled out a survey in, from the mail. Did you send that?
Yes. So, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Survey went out by mail.
Okay.
And then the LRTP surveys, we did in-person at events and also just online advertising, trying to get people to fill them out online. Most of them came at events, so you must have gotten a bicycle and pedestrian survey.
Okay.
So thank you if you filled it out and sent it back.
Because I was like, it was pretty intense. I'm like, wow, these are getting really, really detailed about these questions. So I was just wondering if, yeah, how many, how many of those, those surveys that you sent out came back to give you information regarding this particular, the long, the long-range transportation plan?
So those are, or the input from those is not included in the long-range transportation plan? That'll be a separate report that goes out. That data actually hasn't been processed yet. But we sent out, I think, 1,700 surveys, and we needed to get back 256 in order for it to be statistically representative, and I think we got almost 400 back.
Excellent, okay.
So hopefully that will be illustrative. But again, the data hasn't been processed, so unfortunately I can't tell you what those results are.
Okay, no, I just, I just wanted to know if it was kind of in the same vein, but I said, it's, it's, it is, but not.
Right, right, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Can you remind us again the deadline for comment on the LRTP?
The public comment period ends on Thursday, November 21.
Okay.
Which is this Thursday. Exactly.
Great, go home and start reading.
Yes, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. We have none. And we are now coming up on reports of standing committees. The first item on the committee report is the Prairie Fruits Farm lease. So I think before we hear from our committee chair, I'll take the public input from Mr. Lakey.
Yes, I'm Robert Lakey, and our family has farmed that seven-acre patch that you guys have gotten a proposal to rent to the Prairie Fruit Farm for $350 for the whole seven acres. And we were never even contacted about anything, about a price to be paid. And we've always negotiated with the city, but all I know is I read in the paper where you're renting, you're running, going to try to rent the farm to the Prairie Fruit Farms for $350, and we were paying 700. So I guess I don't understand the logic of why you would want to take less money when you're getting more money for it. I guess I would like an answer to what, why you chose to go this route. When, like I say, we've been, and we were, you know, and I'm very much on board with Olympian Road, don't take me wrong, and I would more than gladly just give the ground up to get this thing moving through, because it has been a very good through road for traffic out there. But I guess I don't understand the logic on why you would take less, you know, rent for, for something.
Well, it's not just a question of the rent itself, it's the purpose or the use of the land. And we issued a request for proposals. We received two proposals. And the focus of the RFP was to use the land, number one, restore the soil, and number two, use the land for food production rather than grain production. So that's the reason for going in a different direction.
So I guess I still don't, I still can't buy that, so I guess I don't understand it. And I've got a proposal here for $1,400 for that ground. So if you want to rent it to him for 350, thank you for answering to the taxpayer why you took less money to help somebody out like that. And that guy was against Olympian Road all the way through, and he's gonna make a lot of money on fruits out there to sell to the, up here to the public. So I will guarantee he'll make more off of that than we'll ever make off of farming it.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
So before you vote, I guess you need to consider this proposal that I've got here for 1,400.
Did you want to read that into the record?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't you read that into the record?
We, Bob, and Jason Lakey farmed seven acres that we rented from the city for $700 an acre. We submit a bid of $1,400 for the same parcel with a five-year lease starting for 2020 year crop year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you want this copy or the...
Would you please give it to the city clerk? And it'll be entered into the record. Thank you. Okay, is there, Bill, is there a motion?
Yeah, the committee met last week, and we forwarded several ordinances and resolutions to council, all with recommendation for approval. First is ordinance number 2019-11-062, an ordinance authorizing the lease of parcels with pins 25-15-29-400-023 and 024 to Prairie Fruits Farms LLC for the committee I move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Jared. Further discussion. Sharice?
For the gentleman that just had his input, didn't we have a public meeting, hearing on that before?
Okay, yes.
Yes, we did.
I just wanted to know, I don't know, I don't, I thought we had a public, and no one showed up. Am I correct, sir?
Correct.
So there was a public hearing regarding the lease of this land, and no one showed up to give a yea or a nay regarding the leasing of the land.
Well, we're, we're in discussion now here.
So I just wanted to, to make clear that, that I remember there being a public, a public hearing regarding that.
Yeah, that was, it was last week.
Okay.
Any other comments? Bill?
Yeah, I mean, I noticed, you know, with the RFP, there's also a lot of staff time that went into this. I don't think it was a question of dollars. I think it was a initiative from the administration to, and maybe from the Sustainability Advisory Committee, I don't know who started this, but there was some initiative to encourage some local food development, tourism. I know our market at the square emphasizes local foods and things like that. So I think it was more than just a dollars and cents issue, so it doesn't come down to, you know, whether we're gonna make another $700 a year on it. It's just, it's more of a strategic strategy to encourage tourism or to expand the availability of local foods.
Okay. Is this a roll call? Will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Brown?
Next is resolution number 2019-11-044R, a resolution authorizing a small cell license agreement with AT&amp;T. For the committee, I move approval.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes?
Only five tonight to call.
I keep waiting for the next person. Thank you.
Next is resolution number 2019-11-045R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Champaign County Regional Planning Commission for media production services. For the committee, I move approval.
Second. Moved by Bill, seconded by Sharice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes?
Only five tonight to call.
I keep waiting for the next person. Thank you.
Next is resolution number 2019-11-045R, a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement with Champaign County Regional Planning Commission for media production services. For the committee, I move approval.
Second. Moved by Bill, seconded by Sharice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next is ordinance number 2019-11-063, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter 22, Article 7, Section 22-91A, Amendment to the Food and Beverage Tax Ordinance. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Sharice. Bill?
Yeah, with the absence of Mary Alice and Dennis, I think I'd like to hear what they have, what kind of input they have on this, and have further discussion, so I'm going to move to defer.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Dean, and under council rules, this automatically would be deferred to the next regular city council meeting on December 2nd.
December 9th?
Second.
Oh, okay.
Next is ordinance number 2019-11-064, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter 22, Article 5, Section 22-60 through Section 22-65, Amendment to Hotel Motel Use Tax. For the committee, I move approval.
I'll second it.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Dean. Further questions or discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
And last is ordinance number 2019-11-065, an ordinance approving, an ordinance, an ordinance approving the extension of final plat, approval, Union Gardens subdivision plan case number 2364-S18. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Bill. Under new business, we have resolution number?
Reports of special committees or officers?
Oh, here we are, sorry. Reports of special committees? Reports of officers? Now we move to new business. Under new business, we have resolution number 2019-11-047R, which is a resolution amending an Illinois Jobs Now grant agreement. Carol?
This all goes back about 10 years ago when we got an Illinois Jobs Now exclamation point, grant to extend Olympian Drive. And the short version of it, you have the memo, is that after cleaning up the paperwork associated with it, it was determined by I dot that we're actually eligible for almost another $200,000 under the grant, and this resolution would amend the agreement to allow us to receive that additional funds. And I recommend that the council approve it. It would be $192, I mean, $192,229.41, to be exact.
I'll move that we approve that resolution.
We need to, a point of order here, we need to move the, to defer or to suspend the rule on, the resolution on resolutions.
I'll move to suspend the resolution on resolutions.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second to suspend the resolution on resolutions, although I have the slightest idea what the heck that means.
You just love saying that.
I'm going to, I'm going to recommend a change in that rule.
Well, at this point, I need a mo, I need, all those in favor of suspending the resolution on resolutions, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That allows us to vote on this item tonight, rather than sending it through committee. Now we need a motion to get this on the floor, and we'll have discussion.
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
I'm going to give that to Eric this time.
Yeah, it's his birthday.
Because it's his birthday. Bill, you had a question?
Yeah, so as far as the budgeting goes, so this $200,000 had been budgeted and spent, so will it get rebudgeted for capital improvements, or?
That's an Elizabeth Hanlon question.
What happens to this money?
I'm learning my way around I dot, but I don't know that, that, what happens when the money comes back.
So I don't have the report in front of me, but I, as I understand it, this is grant money that's related to a project that was completed at some time in the past. So we'll have to determine which fund that belongs in, which is one of our capital improvement funds, certainly, I think. And then it would get allocated through the capital improvement planning process.
So is, is this like a check that I dot just writes to Urbana, saying, hey, you get this money, and we, and it's, it's targeted toward something within the transportation area of Urbana that, I mean, you said we already did a, already did the project, so I'm assuming that the project 10 years ago, whatever it is, is already kind of paid for?
I'm going to let Carol answer.
Yes, this is, this is for Olympian Drive, the, the section that was built between Apollo Drive and Lincoln Avenue.
Okay.
And the way I dot does most of these grants is that you pay, and they reimburse eligible expenses. So there were certain expenses that were eligible under this Illinois Jobs Now grant. And there, there, there were three different projects that were, the entirety of it had been broken up into three different discrete projects, and we hadn't kept the funding separate. And so we, we thought we had maxed out the grant money, but then after, after the, the funds were all sorted out, it was determined that we actually were eligible for another almost $200,000. So I think what Elizabeth is saying is, we've spent the money on the project, when it comes back, there's, there's a, there's a, you know, there's some big pots of money in the capital program, and this will be returned to whatever pot it came out of originally. Is that, is that right, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Okeydoke. Thank you very much.
Bottom line, it's good news. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yeah.
Jacobson?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item on the agenda is an appointment to boards and commissions. I'm, I'd like to submit for your approval appointment of Mikhail Lubiansky, who's, as Vice Chair of the Civilian Police Review Board. Mr. Lubiansky is an associate professor in the Department of Psychology at the University of Illinois. He has experience as a restorative justice consultant, educator, and facilitator. He has spoken actually before city council on a number of occasions, and he has served as a member of the Police Review Board since 2016.
I'll move approval of that appointment.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Eric. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.